Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we come to say thank you for the privilege to come to you in prayer. We also thank you for all the goodness and mercy you bestowed upon us in spite of our many shortcomings. We thank you for the blessing this city and the city council in the year 2014 and for everything they were able to accomplish. There's still work, but Lord, we know through you, all things are possible. As we enter 2015, Lord, help us to accept the things we cannot change. Give us the strength to change the things we can and grant us the wisdom to know the difference. Help this council to work together to better this city and not to focus on their differences, but to build on their commonalities. And let us not forget the unemployed, the homeless, and the underserved. Lord, help us to tear down the invisible walls that divide us and help us to build permanent bridges that unite us. And we pray your continued blessings upon this council, their families, and all that make the sacrifice to serve mankind. This is our prayer. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Okay. See if I can get this thing up and run it. Sidney mess with my computer, too. If you're gonna get over here, make sure you get everything ready to go.
I'll do that next time.
Sidnoid. Okay. First item of business tonight is our citizen comment, and I have one speaker card, our friend, Mr. Tom Mittler, tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As Jay said, my name is Tom Mittler. I appreciate the city's recognition of January as Poverty Awareness Month, which we'll get to next, I suppose. I commend the city staff, and you probably are more frequently used to hearing complaints about the city staff, so I want to take this opportunity to thank the staff and the Partners in Prevention Program that is part of the Community Services Department. And I may not know all of them, but I have worked with Holly Fuller, Lyndale McAllister, and Garleen Hillhaus. This group does more than show up for a job every day. They bring a passion for their mission. I volunteered with the Society of St. Vincent de Paul at St. Matthew's Catholic Church for the last two and a half years. We provide benevolent help to over 300 families every year. Most Longview residents would be surprised at the number of families that live in poverty. I can confirm from my personal contacts that the statistics about poverty are accurate. Many are working families. Most are single parents, usually women who have been abandoned by the children's father, unfortunately. Many are disabled, both physically and mentally, and they're trying to survive on less than $700 a month SSI payments. In my opinion, the stereotype of the wealthy, welfare queen just doesn't exist here. Affordable decent housing is one of the biggest challenges faced by the poor families. Groups like Longview Habitat for Humanity and other agencies do a great job, but are limited by the number of houses they can provide. Tonight, I would like to plant a seed in all of our minds of an idea that seems to be becoming popular quickly across the country. There's TV shows about it. Recently read a big magazine article about it. It's kind of a radical concept called the Tiny House Project, with houses as small as 200 square feet. You could probably put about a dozen of them in this room here. Well, most of us just couldn't imagine living in such a small space. For a single family or a single person or a family, a mother and one child perhaps, a fairly small house could provide the best opportunity to get out of expensive, poor-conditioned rental property with the chance to actually own their own house at an affordable price, similar to, say, the Habitat Program, but at a much lower cost. I realize this would require zoning variances and likely not be popular with neighbors, but I believe it provides an opportunity for a paradigm shift in how we address a major need in our city. I want to thank you for this time and support for the work to relieve poverty in our community.
That's obviously something we should always be focused on, the least of ours, that in our community, especially cold weather like we have now, how many people live in squala? We should always be trying to explore ways to reach out, you know, to the least of ours. So, Tom, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Okay, presentation of Longview Bridges Out of Poverty Initiative. Holly Fuller.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and bring you up to date a little bit about what our Longview Bridges Out of Poverty Steering Committee Group is doing and to share with you an initiative that we have going on this month for Poverty Awareness Month. We have produced a calendar that is out in the community. I'm gonna highlight a few things from that for you this evening, but one of the things that we talked about in our group is that it is Poverty Awareness Month, but we want people to do more than just be aware. We want people to move into action. So, we have put together a calendar that will hopefully help some people to do that. All of our Sundays are designated as Pay It Forward Sundays. This is a time for you to help someone in need at the grocery store or providing just encouragement to someone who is struggling. Another point that I wanted to bring forth is just a statistic of a family of three earning minimum wage earns $4,000 under the poverty level, which is very low. The poverty level right now for a family of four is around just a little more than $23,000 a year. Another challenge would be to use public transportation only, just for one day, or rely on a friend or a family member to provide your transportation for you. Transportation is one of the number-one struggles that people in poverty have. It's a big obstacle to getting to jobs and appointments and different things, so we are offering up a challenge for people to try to just get through their day by using public transportation for one day. And then finally, to just ask yourself, how many paychecks am I away from being in poverty or homeless? Each one of us in this room, I guess, would have a number associated with that, and it just goes to show that none of us are immune to being in that situation if things don't fall in line in our life, which has often happened with others that we're working with. Longview Bridges Out of Poverty began a few years back. We started addressing the issue of poverty back in 2009 when we started our first Getting Ahead class. In April of 2013, we started our steering committee, and I'd like to recognize those who are in the chamber tonight that are part of that steering committee, different representatives from agencies. Please stand. And there are certainly others that aren't able to be with us tonight, but each of these individuals and through their agencies are working toward addressing the issue of poverty in their own way. And we come together monthly as a steering committee to share resources and ideas and to move things forward and moving the needle on poverty in our community. I'd like to introduce to you Dr. John Fizell. He is the vice chair of our Longview Bridges Out of Poverty Steering Committee, and he's gonna share with you some information about some local statistics, reasons why this initiative is important to our community, and also share a success story from one of our Getting Ahead participants.
Thank you, Holly. Let me begin with a few local statistics. It's estimated that more than 27% of Gregg County children live in poverty. In some of the Longview elementary schools, up to 95% of the student population are economically disadvantaged. In 2014, one local nonprofit agency provided more than 27,000 food boxes to Longview families. There were other agencies which also provided food boxes. And in the 18-week class, Getting Ahead in a Just Getting By world, close to 70 adults graduated. While these parents were in class, their children attended the children's program. It's important to address the issues of poverty by working alongside individuals to provide resources, encouragement, and support as they persevere along the path out of poverty. Individuals who have knowledge and support are more likely to break free from the stronghold of poverty and pass what they learn to the next generation, breaking the cycle of generational poverty. This is exactly what Dionne King did. With her permission, let me share highlights of her story. When Dionne started Getting Ahead in 2009, she was a single mother of three children working a part-time job, receiving food stamps, and relying on subsidized housing for her family. At that time, she had $5 in her savings account. Within weeks of starting the class, she reported changes in her attitude and her ability to communicate more effectively with her children's school personnel. She was becoming calmer and more respectful. She completed the 18-week Getting Ahead course and continued to attend the monthly support meetings. Dionne became the co-facilitator for other Getting Ahead classes and is still serving in that role. She is eager to share with others what she has learned. Over the past few years, Dionne has pursued her education, married, and obtained a full-time job. She has relinquished her housing assistance and moved to better housing. Not only does Dionne have a full-time job where she has employment benefits, but she is also participating in the company's 401K. Dionne said she never thought her children would be able to go to college, but her oldest daughter is currently taking college courses in pursuit of her degree. This is not to say that Dionne has not had ups and downs, as we all do, but her story is one of overcoming great obstacles. In her words, quote, "I never thought this would be possible, but I did it." When people are given opportunities, support, and knowledge, they can rise above difficult circumstances, and when that happens, it helps to create a more employment-friendly community where there are win-wins for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all very much. Okay, presentation, let's see, of the Partners in Prevention Mentoring Program, Lyndale McAllister.
This is Partners in Prevention Night, so we're happy about that. This is also National Mentoring Month. It's a month really dedicated to focusing on the children and youth of Longview. Over 20,000 children under 18 years of age in Longview, 20,000 young people who are the future of this community. It's a chance to think about what our vision is for the youth of Longview. When you ask adults about their vision for their kids, we hear things like, "We want kids who are connected and engaged, kids with kindness and generosity, kids who are happy, kids who contribute to their community." That's the language of thriving. Thriving kids translates into thriving community. Thriving is really the focus of mentoring. We know that 27% of children living in Gregg County live in poverty. We also know that nationally, only one quarter of the 80 million kids, when they become high school students, are on the pathway to human thriving. The other three quarters have fallen off that path. It's no longer about purpose and hope and connectedness and engagement and joy. Only one third, one quarter, of America's teenagers stay on a path to human thriving. So, one of the key axioms of human development is this: Youth are not vessels to be filled, but fires to be lit. The best of development is from the inside out, not the outside in. Fanning that inner light, that inner spark, that's what mentoring is about. We provide mentors for over 155 students with the greatest need in the Longview area. We have a 30-second public service announcement for National Mentoring Month, one of two that's running on City View, so please listen.
Our country needs your help. Many young people today feel as if they don't matter and that their future prospects are limited. As a nation, we need to invest in our young people. Let them know that they are full of potential. Now, let's help them succeed, and mentoring can do that. Mentors can help young people build confidence and give them hope for the future, so you can help your country by volunteering as a mentor to a young person in your community. And you'll be surprised how good it will make you feel. Mentoring works. Become a mentor.
The most recent conclusion in the field of positive youth development is this: Nothing, nothing has more impact in the life of a child than positive relationships. A 2013 national study shows that young people with mentors are more likely to report higher educational aspirations and graduation from college or technical school. Young people with mentors are more likely to participate regularly in sports or other extracurricular activities and in positive activities in general. Young people with mentors are more likely to volunteer in their community. In our own research with our young people currently in the Longview area, 84% report that because of mentoring, my attitude toward school is better. 83% report my grades and test scores are better. 87% report that because of having a mentor, I think it's important to try and help others. The role of the mentor is to help someone develop their life. It is to come alongside caregivers. One of our mentees is a high school young man who's living with several siblings with a disabled and very ill grandmother. Since the mentor came into his life three years ago, this young man and his siblings have had to live with several different relatives. A constant for him has been this mentor who has taken him on college visits and encouraged him in his sports and shown him a new world of hope. He's guiding him in developing a new positive future story. This young man now wants to attend his mentor's alma mater, which is always fun to hear. We also have two young women who are mentors in our program that are now, that came through the program, and they're now paying it forward and mentoring two young girls. One of our Longview police officers was a mentee in our program. We also have a young woman who just graduated with her master's in public accounting from Stephen F. Austin University. We know that mentoring works. All of our mentees experience life circumstances that would have possibly prevented them from ever graduating from high school. A national concern for our young people is the mentoring gap, and that is not enough mentors to serve all the young people who need them. So, I want to mention that particularly tonight, that there's a critical need for men to mentor boys in our community. In the chambers this evening, we have several mentors present, and we also have others who are serving on Mentoring Advisory Council and are actively working with the mentoring program. So, if you're here tonight, would you please stand? And one of our council members, Kristen, is she on? These are a few of the 155 that are mentoring in our city. In closing, I want to thank the city council for your support of mentoring and the Greater Longview United Way and the Rotary Club of Longview for their support through a recent grant. I leave you with this charge: Come be someone who matters to someone who matters. Come light sparks in the lives of young people. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you. Joel, was she talking about you as far as mentoring that young man to go to your college? Wasn't that Baylor or what?
I thought she was talking about somebody else. They're welcome to come.
I was just making sure it wasn't trying to tell me to go into Alabama, but I mean...
All right, now. Here we go.
We need an advantage anywhere we can get. We can't even get a defense coordinator these days.
It was a train wreck. It was a train wreck.
Okay, we're gonna do a couple of other presentations. Proclamation commemorating Poverty Awareness Month. Ms. Holly Fuller.
Well, y'all are busy tonight, aren't you?
You don't trust me, big man?
How do you answer that?
At least I admit it.
Okay. Poverty in America Awareness Month, January 2015. Over 4 million residents in the state of Texas and 20.3% of Longview families, 27% of children in Gregg County live in a state of poverty. Local agencies and organizations are striving to eliminate poverty through awareness, education, and collaborative efforts in the community and by participating in the Longview Bridges Out of Poverty Initiative. Longview Bridges Out of Poverty strives to move individuals from poverty to self-sufficiency through the Getting Ahead class, provide training and poverty simulations to the community, and bring all sectors of the community together to improve outcomes. 90% of recent Getting Ahead class graduates are working at least one job and are attending college and striving for self-sufficiency. So therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Longview supports the initiative to educate citizens with regards to poverty in the city of Longview and the surrounding area. Be it also resolved that the city of Longview commits to the creation and maintenance of a healthy community that will support a positive quality of life for all the citizens of Longview. So therefore, I, Jay Dean, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Longview, do hereby proclaim January as Poverty in America Awareness Month. Thank you very much, Holly.
I would like to also mention, we showed the calendar earlier during the presentation, but if anyone would like to access that to see what activities and events are scheduled for the month, that's on the Partners in Prevention website, pip.longviewtexas.gov.
Can we do that through City View? Maybe we can put it, okay. So, we can do it through the city website or channel? Okay, thank you, Holly. Okay, National Mentoring Proclamation. Lyndale McAllister.
My pronouncer is incorrect.
Ms. Lyndale.
Lyndale. I like Lyndale.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, so National Mentoring Month, January 2015. January is National Mentoring Month, a time to celebrate the positive impact of quality programs and volunteer mentors who invest in young people's lives, making a positive difference. Quality mentoring encourages positive choices, promotes self-esteem, supports academic achievement, and introduces young people to new ideas. Mentoring is a proven cost-effective investment. For every $1 invested in mentoring, there is a $3 return to society. Quality mentoring programs like the city of Longview's Partners in Prevention Mentoring Program play a powerful role in preventing substance abuse, incarceration, and youth violence, as well as boosting academic achievement and workforce readiness through volunteer serving as mentors and forever friends and co-pilots. 155 mentors serve children in the Longview area by being positive role models, spending time with them, helping young people set career goals, and helping them navigate the path to adulthood more successfully. All of the above-listed benefits serve to link youth to economic opportunity while also strengthening the fiber of our community. Despite these benefits, 1 in 3 youth will reach age 19 without a mentor, constituting a mentoring gap that demonstrates a need for collaboration and resources. The city of Longview would like to thank the mentors and those serving on the mentor agency advisory council that have given it their time and energy to make a difference in the life of a child. So therefore, I, Jay Dean, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Longview, do hereby proclaim January as National Mentoring Month in Longview. And again, thanks, thanks to all of y'all. I know a lot of you that are doing the mentoring now, but thank y'all very much, okay? Ms. Lyndale, thank you very much. Okay, council, let's see, we have another. We have the presentation to council, the Hotel Conference Center feasibility study. Mr. David Parker. Thank y'all for coming tonight. Frank, especially you. Susan, thank you for bringing Frank. Mr. Frank Richards. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You here to bring us a bunch of good news?
I am.
Good. We're looking forward to hearing it.
Well, very good. It's so good to be here.
Good.
Just to give you a little background on me, to start things off, I opened my firm in 2001, but prior to that, I was with the major firm and right out of college and learned everything, and now I'm out in the big world. We're based in Houston. We've completed over 150 projects, many similar to this one, and have a good basis for what we're talking about. Primarily, we do feasibility studies and economic impact studies and just overall development Thought I'd give us just a quick introduction to the Texas metro markets. We tend to look at the state broken out into two categories. The metro markets is where Longview would fit with Dallas and San Antonio, everybody else, and then the non-metro markets are all the smaller towns. The big takeaway from this is seeing the difference between five years ago and today. That is the result of the recovery that we're facing. I would say that 2006, 2007 was similar to this in terms of occupancy. The recession of '08 and '09 stripped about 10 points of occupancy off the state as a whole, and in many markets, some worse, but the recovery has been good. Along with the recovery has been a nice rebounding and average daily rate. So, these are the two primary metrics by which we measure hotel performance. In the smaller markets, they too had a strong recovery, and they too had a strong recovery in average daily rate. Just a quick recap, some of which you know about Longview. The MSA is about 218,000 people with a $43,000 average household income. On the hotel side, it's about 1,200 rooms, 1,200 guest rooms. 20 of them are branded, and the market occupancy is not too different from the metro average of about 68%, actually a little higher than the metro as a whole, or than the state as a whole. And then the market average daily rate is a little stronger, too, at about $97. So, this is what's currently going on in your city. Presently, your market leader is the Hampton Inn on the north side, but I think soon the Hilton Garden Inn will open, maybe give it some competition. And perhaps the State Bridge that opened recently is just building its base. Yep. Do you have a piece of paper for this? There we go. So, we looked at the market, and we were asked to render an opinion on the feasibility of where to build a hotel that might receive a city incentive and might contain major meeting space. And we looked at two options, one of which was located south on I-20 in that general vicinity. We looked at that location. We recommended a product that was limited service in nature, meaning that it doesn't have an onsite restaurant, that its meeting space would have a catering component. We looked at that and thought that 120 rooms would be good. That size property would require about 50 people to operate, and we looked at the occupancy of the city at the time and the future when this would open and derived its competitive advantages and determined that it would stabilize at about a 74% occupancy, being a new property, achieving in that future date about 120 average daily rate. We compared that then to, we also looked at central Longview, something closer to downtown. There's not as much other properties nearby, so we think that it would have to have a few more rooms, so we recommend 150. We recommend that it be select service, meaning have an onsite restaurant and bar. Requires more people to operate if you do that, but it would probably achieve just slightly less occupancy at 71%, but much stronger average daily rate at 135. So, when you compare the two, the limited service doesn't have as high a top-line revenue, primarily because the select service has more rooms, but also the limited service doesn't produce as much net operating income. The net operating income statistics on this slide will be very important in understanding how feasible either of these projects would be. Just a quick side on the... Just a quick side on the conference center, we wanted, we kept the conference center analysis the same for both scenarios. So in both cases, you know, we looked at the market, we looked at the competitive facilities that you have, we looked at the types of groups that you could attract, and determined that it would be about an 18,000-square-foot facility attached to the hotel, producing about 9,000 square feet of net meeting space. Within that would be a 6,000-square-foot ballroom with three divisions, and that would seat about 300 people comfortably on 10 top rounds, which is a more formal banquet setting. And then in addition, it would have about 3,000 square feet of breakout rooms or a fancy boardroom. So we looked at that and did some analysis to determine what we thought it would do in terms of attendance, and this is a very big, long analysis that I don't want to go over in detail, it's in the report, but the takeaway on it is that it would be very busy. You know, we would see it being used heavily. Just a quick aside, that's not a bullet on this thing, but we look at Longview, we look at the types of business that are here, and we know that whenever a city adds a new, a new meeting room, a new, you know, ballroom capable of 300 people, it immediately becomes very popular for all the weddings. And so you end up with a calendar that's full with 300 weddings a year, or 100 weddings a year, you got two days every weekend, but it's always what you do at the middle of the week. The middle of the week is, it's very important. And so you have to have businesses that are doing training, and when you look at what you have here, there's a tremendous amount of safety training that's occurring in the private sector in this marketplace and in your public facilities and onsite at various facilities. But what's not happening as strong, what could happen with more facilities that are focused to this, is the type of safety training that appeals to just general east Texas. And so anybody that shows up at a refinery or a facility has to have a safety card that says they've completed the necessary requirements to be there. So there's businesses around the state that focus on that, heavily done in Houston, heavily done in west Texas, and could easily be done here. So what, that's one of the takeaways that I thought of in this marketplace that could really be appealing to a good conference center is, you know, midweek training, and a lot of times, these are professional people that need this as well. So that being the case, that's kind of where I see a lot of the midweek demand for such a facility. The big takeaway on this is through a very long process of how many large banquets, small banquets, what percentage of catering and beverage and all that. The big takeaway is we came up with an estimate of about a million five in potential catering-only revenue. So in addition to this, is your AV setup, and sometimes your rental on the room itself, but we needed an analysis to, you know, get us comfortable with what we thought would be the, the revenue in the building. So we look at feasibility. We looked at the two scenarios, select service in the center of town and the limited service out on I-20. Select service tends to be more vertical, land tends to be more expensive, and so we kind of think that about four to six acres would work. Limited service tends to be more spread out, there's more land available on I-20, so six to 10 acres, but in either case, about $2 million bucks would be needed for the site. On a cost-per-key basis, limited service is cheaper to build than select service, $95,000 a key versus $125,000. In either case, 18,000 square feet of conference space at 250 bucks a foot is about four and a half million. So when we look at all the components, the project, limited service could be just under 18 million, select service could be just over 25 million. Then we look at just the basic assumptions of financing, typically, these things are financed at 70 percent loan to cost, and so what the developer has to figure out is, I need to get $5.4 million to do a limited service with the conference center, or seven and a half million to do a select service with the conference center. And what he has to measure is his return on that investment. So we first set out to determine what would that return be based on how we see it performing in this marketplace. So again, the select service is producing seven and a half million, or needs seven and a half million of equity, would return, the net operating income of a billion and seven, less the debt, produces about a $410,000 distribution. That's a negative cash-on-cash return. The limited service would be 5.4 million required equity, producing a $400,000 potential distribution after debt service. At least it's a positive return, but it's still not to the threshold that private sector wants on a return for its investment. So we look at the future, what would it sell for? So we go out five years, and we put a cap rate on the net operating income, and it's, you know, $20 million for the select service, which is less than what it cost to put in the ground today, and $15 million on the limited service, which is still less but closer. So when you look at the internal rate of return on either scenario, they're still both negative. So clearly, a hotel with either limited service or select service, whether it's central or whether it's south, it's going to need a major help from the city to amortize the cost of the $4.5 million conference center that would be attached to it. The question is how much and how to do it. So again, we compare the two sides. The, assuming the land is $2 million, the city, you know, could contribute the land, acquire it and contribute it, but they would have to, for the select service hotel in Central Longview, contribute another three and a half million towards the conference center. That would bring the equity investment down to three, and just under three and a half million. Run through the same scenarios of net operating income, it's debt service. We'd also recommend that you would give a hot hotel occupancy tax rebate for what the city receives presently, which is 7 percent, give that back to the hotel for a period of 10 years. That would increase its potential distribution from the 500,000 to, or the 400 and something thousand to 903. That gives it a cash-on-cash basis, a 24 percent return, and that's usually in the area that a developer would get interested. But more importantly is what the internal rate of return is over the life of the deal. Now, I know this is a lot of numbers, and it gets hard to follow this. It's all in that report that I distributed, but I didn't want to read it word for word. So just the long and the short of it, internal rate of return, 22.6. That is a number that, that works for the private sector. So just to compare the limited service, everything's slightly smaller across the board, about the same cash-on-cash return and about the same internal rate of return based on $2 million site that the city would contribute, about a million seven in some form of cash incentive or reduced development cost, and a hotel occupancy tax rebate of 7 percent of its revenue. Again, its revenue is smaller because its room count is smaller, therefore, the annual contribution is less. So just to quickly summarize, you know, downtown would have a select service hotel, 150 rooms, 18,000 feet of meeting space, you know, land would be in that one to three million range. It would still require additional incentive, and so the total participation in the city would be between four and a half and six and a half million for a select service hotel. Limited service, you know, the contribution is slightly less, 2.7 to 4.7. So we look at it, and we say north versus south, limited service versus select service. If you go I-20, the south, then I would recommend a limited service hotel with about 120 rooms. By, by the way, 120 rooms is slightly larger than most limited service hotels. And when I say limited service, and to paint a picture, you know, think of the Hampton Inn in Mesquite is connected to a very large ballroom. It's a very large Hampton Inn, it's about 160 rooms, and it has a very large lobby. It just doesn't have the, the restaurants and the meetings and the bar and everything. What this would do is it does give an anchor to the limited service hotels that are out there, and we think that if, you know, it has a midweek focus of safety training and other regional type of meetings, then that allows it to have a very robust calendar on the weekends. Putting something new out on I-20 gives the city a good first impression, and I would say also that a limited service hotel on I-20 is going to more easily attract business from the freeway. Now, if we compare this idea to downtown, then I would say you would have to go select service because it would add to the core of the city, and it brings more identity to the, the center part of the city, but it doesn't have as much other property to overflow to, so it would have to require more rooms. And if you, as select service, you would have to add restaurant and bar, and you would have to have more rooms to amortize that cost. But why not select service on I-20? And I think that it just won't appeal to, as to walk-in traffic as much, walk-in traffic or drive-in traffic, those that pull off to make that last minute. When they see, you know, Fairfield or Spring Hill, they're more likely to try that than they would say Hyatt Place, because it's not usually a property type that would appeal to those making a last-minute decision. So just to wrap things up, the next steps, I would say the city should get comfortable with the amount of incentive that would be required, you know, pick a location that is either central versus south, and then I would recommend that you go ahead and identify and negotiate and buy land. There's various sites to consider in either place, because you want to ultimately go to a developer and say, come, private sector, and build a hotel, here's how we're going to help. But to focus them, you want to give them the site that you want, because you know your city best. You're going to want to demolish whatever's on that site, master plan it, and it may be, you know, a site that has room for restaurant pad sites, for nationally branded restaurants to fit outside the hotel. And then ultimately, once you have all these things figured out, then you would want to conduct an RFE to select that developer, and you want to give them a framework to work in. So I ran through that very quickly because I really like to take questions and have an open dialogue, and hopefully I didn't hit you over to have too many hard numbers.
I don't know, questions, comments? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you for your presentation.
You're very welcome.
That $2 million figure that, for incentives for the land, is that just a general idea of what we're saying we would potentially put up or bring to the table to sweeten the deal?
I think so. A lot of cities do this, is they have a spot where they want the hotel and the conference center more importantly to go because it is either nearby other things that give it critical mass, or it's nearby things they want to grow, or they want to direct the growth of the city somehow. And so it works out to, if it's got a calculator, you know, five acres at 10 bucks a foot or something like that, it's about what retail land costs, because the site you select, it's going to have to be visible, it's going to have to be located near other successful things, and, and so $2 million, million to 3 million is a nice range. Plus, whatever you buy, if it has something on it that, you know, you have to remove, remediate, it may be something that's in the middle of a nice spot, but it itself has a problem that you have to clean up, so.
Yeah, because I'm just wondering, do we really know the differences in the property value prices, what we would actually, you know, that's why I was like, 2 million, that's pretty limiting, but I guess that comes back to council.
It comes back to council, and I think you would also, you know, entertain the use of a local broker to help, you know, interface directly with landowners, because you would want to buy it in the open market.
Okay, additional questions? Mr. Mainly.
David, again, thank you for coming to make the presentation. This is, this is very good. I do have several questions. One, I'm sure we're not the first city to be faced with something like this. What have you seen other cities do? What other options do we have besides just writing a check for 2 million or 5.5 million?
Well, I think you would, the easiest thing is to control your site and just get it bought now and get it cleaned up now and have a budget for that. Another way to do it without having to give any additional funds is to buy enough land that could have additional private uses on it, and so all you're giving is the land for your acquisition and redevelopment costs, and let the private sector come alongside and say, yes, a hotel and a conference center works, yes. Let's accentuate that with a Starbucks on the corner and a, you know, Chili's and a TGI Friday, or some other, you know, restaurants that, that complement everything.
Kind of a mixed-use approach?
Very much a mixed-use approach. And then let them, let the private sector keep the profit from that land development, and that reduces, that would eliminate the additional cash that.
Okay, good, so I'm glad, that's a good segue to the next question I was going to ask. So when you've seen in that scenario where you have a mixed use, have you seen in the past where different private entities, public entities have been involved, say like a county and a city and a economic development, things like, in addition to private?
It does happen, it does happen, and usually the, depends on the location, I think in Longview, it is, y'all are the sole collectors of the, the local collectors of hotel occupancy tax, but everybody has a piece of property tax, and so another thing that cities or that developers will ask for is a long-term abatement based on job creation, and so, you know, you would go to the county, you would go to the city. The other things that I've seen are, in extreme cases, like the City of Houston, they were able to go to the state and get rebates of the state portion of the hotel occupancy tax. So there's other grants that can be applied for, so on and so forth.
Okay, great, thank you, those are my questions.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Mr. Gable.
Thank you for the presentation, David.
Yes.
Enjoyed it, wonderful. My day, my question is the 23 percent return from, I'm assuming, a developer. Now, what is that 23 percent return based on? Is that based on the sales value of that particular unit after five years, which is 15.6 million? Is that correct?
It is a combination of things.
Is that based on the initial investment by the city?
No, it is based on the net amount of private sector dollars that go in.
Okay, the 23 percent?
Yes, let me get to the right slide here. So the private sector is out trying to raise three and a half, in the select service downtown scenario, they're going to raise three and a half million, and they're going to have to return that.
Internal rate of return, which is, I guess.
So they get two things over time. They get potential distributions over time that in this particular year, 2020, it's estimated to be around 900,000, early years or, or less than that as occupancy rate build up. Then they get the future sale, the proceeds of sale. So they have three and a half million coming in, they have roughly 900,000 a year, I'm sorry, three and a half million going out, roughly 900,000 a year coming back, and then at the end, well, there's one little catch, 900,000 we refer to as the return on capital.
Correct.
The 5.9 million net proceeds of sale is the return of capital.
Yes.
So their three and a half million grew to 5.9 when they got it back. Not only that, but they were able to receive the return on capital over the years.
So this will be contracted for five years, as I look at your chart, 2020?
Yeah, I based this on a five-year hold.
Okay.
And it could be a 10-year hold. There's no fixed amount of years, you can't set it up like an office building lease and just say, we're going to sell at this time. The hotel market has, it ebbs and flows, and you want to time your exit when the market is good, and so it could be anywhere from.
Five to 10 years.
Five to 10 years typically.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anybody else?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could we go to that last slide, summary, just as an explanation on the land cost that, that we're used in this? Obviously, that's the greatest unknown we have because we've not actively gone out and identified a specific site and those type of things, but we used a $2 million estimate in the numbers based on the recent lead co-purchase of the I-20 and Estes property where the old Holiday Inn was. Remember, that's 6.4 acres, and the total cost, including demolition, is about 1.8 million. So we just use that as an estimate, you know, so we wanted to make sure, that's the biggest unknown, it could, so we wanted $3 million, depending on whatever conditions that you find it in, and that's how we arrived at the 2 million.
Okay, so where do we move from here?
I would wonder, David, I guess is probably the right person to ask, is it possible to do research on what, you know, actual land acquisition would cost for either option and kind of explore both, so we would have a better idea of what that number is when we're kind of looking at the two rather than such a range? I don't know everybody's thoughts on that. I think both projects would be awesome for the city, and I would be interested in learning more about both as opposed to just looking at one and moving forward and learning more about that acquisition cost.
I think that is our, would be our next step, is y'all direct us, you know, to go look for land and, and costs and.
Under both scenarios.
Whatever y'all direct us to do. Yes.
I, I, just an opinion, is that, you know, the I-20 corridor is, is such a huge focus, and I think once a comprehensive plan is, is completed, I think that'll just further, you know, show that that is a big focus for us, and my personal preference would be to pursue the limited service. Now, we're probably going to get some pushback from a few different directions because of the number of rooms, because when we first started looking at this project, I think it was 135 or 150.
175.
But then I think we saw data that says why other cities our size, I mean, the 120 was even more than, you know, what some of those other cities.
It's also fairly close to other existing facilities, correct?
Yeah, it has more to feed off of, so, yeah. I can see it being much easier for a Convention and Visitors Bureau to. I can see it being much easier for a convention visitors bureau to book a 400-room peak night event on I-20 if the meetings facility is on I-20, because there's hotel rooms to overflow to.
You know, with all the construction, new construction enhancements downtown, everything that we've done, you know, in trying to bring people back to the downtown and businesses back to our city, I mean, we've done quite a bit there already. We're just really now putting more emphasis and focus on the I-20 corridor, because it's such an important, you know, artery to the city. 30,000 cars per day, any things that we do there to try to capture some of those vehicles stopping and, doing my sales pitch, spending a little money here in Longview.
That's what happens.
Always a good thing. So my preference would be to pursue the limited on the I-20 corridor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Manley.
So I'd like to echo, support that on a couple of levels. You know, we had, we asked our first contracted with David about an I-20 project after the I-20 task force and the results of the task force, Beirut and everything else. We rolled back in and asked him to do a second one after we visited Greenville, because one of the things we saw in Greenville, South Carolina, was that their renaissance, their downtown renaissance, really began with the arrival of a Hyatt hotel that became a real anchor. So we said, "David, please check into this for us. Is this something from a feasibility standpoint that makes sense for Longview?" And it's a little bit scary looking at either one of these, but I think, I'm glad we have this information, think it's valuable for us, for the comprehensive plan, Mr. Mayor, for some long-term planning for downtown. But I think what we need to do is we need to seriously consider this I-20 option, and I think it's the best thing for us on a number of levels. I think you touched on them, not all of them, but most of them. And we also, I'd like to remind the council, we do have a work session coming up...
Right.
...that we might want to consider for that.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, they're not mutually exclusive. You know, I think if you get I-20 with major meeting space, to kind of build on what's happening there with the hotels that are there, doesn't mean that a boutique hotel couldn't still come downtown.
Well, he mentioned the comprehensive plan. I think that's what's going to come out of that. Downtown redevelopment includes that.
Yep.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I just, of course, being a representative from District 3, I support the Interstate 20. I just, again, want to thank you for your time, and I'd also like to add, it's really important, and I appreciate what you said, Mayor, you too, Councilman Manley, it's important that we do what we say we're going to do, and we have the public and community's support to do so. In so doing, it's important that, I've heard you say like three times throughout your presentation, and when we've met prior to this council meeting, if we're truly going to expand, we need additional land. And there's plenty of land ripe for the picking out on Interstate 20. So I have to concur, of course, finally you guys came on board. I'm just... Had to get a joke in tonight. But I definitely agree, and think this would be such a positive step, because this has been something that our community has been discussing for 15 years?
Or more.
Since before you became mayor.
Oh, yeah.
So I think it's time for us to proceed, and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move forward with that. You know, the work session, I'm not sure how much time, but, hey, work sessions can, we can have those anytime we so choose for any particular issue.
And I know we don't want to divert from our discussions for that work session, which is the operation of the animal shelter, which is higher priority.
Yes, sir.
If it's all right, that's the direction, and staff can begin to look along the I-20 corridor and see what might be available and...
Why don't we try to...
Be back to you.
Yeah. Why don't y'all, why don't staff discuss this and come back to council with, when do you think y'all might have something to bring back to discuss?
Well, I don't, it depends on available property, exactly where you would want to locate.
Like I said, y'all go visit.
We'll go.
I don't want to, I don't want to put the bob in a bind, okay?
I don't want to get in the bind.
I don't want to have a bobble bind going here, so, okay. Thank you very much, sir.
You're very welcome.
Great info.
Thank you. Well done.
Consent agenda, Sidney.
Is there any item on the consent agenda that we'd like to pull for separate consideration?
No, sir.
Oh, really? Okay. Anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay. So if not, may I have a motion?
Second.
A motion, second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We have a zoning item tonight, Z14-14. Ms. Char.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The applicant, the applicant is requesting to rezone a piece of property located at 1503 West Marshall, from single-family to heavy commercial. As you can see on the zoning map, this property has dual zoning. It is zoned heavy commercial in the front and single-family four in the rear. The applicant currently owns the property to the south, across the street, where he conducts auto sales. He is just wanting to expand his business across the street. The future lane use map does designate this area as high-intensity business. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommend approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? If not, this item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I do not have any speaker cards to this item. Is anyone here would like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. Council, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. All right. Okay. I think I got one. I got a second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Well, I know it's a new year, but man, wow. Okay. Action item, considering an ordinance authorizing issuance and sale of City of Longview, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2015. John Martin, Southwest Securities.
Evening, Mayor, council members. John Martin with Southwest Securities. It's our pleasure to be here this evening. We put books at your place settings. Do everybody have those? I'm not going to go through this whole book, I promise, Mayor.
That's a good thing.
Yeah. I want to be invited back.
We want to know how much money you're going to save us.
Well, there's two really important things here that are in play. Number one, you know, you'll recall a few years ago that our water and sewer fund was, you know, pretty thin, and you guys have done a fantastic job in terms of getting your house in order in that, and as a result, Standard and Poor's awarded you all an upgrade from A-, which is a great rating, to a double A, to a double A, which, excuse me, you were a double A-, now you're a double A, so you got one notch up.
So we're actually better now than the United States, huh? You're on par with them, man. No, no, we're not on par. We're better. They're double A-, we just said we got an upgrade.
Yep. So they are, you are a double A, you're, and, you know, that always helps, that makes you an even, an even better sell. So, and the fact that you all are, have set up in terms of working on a long-term plan and are set up in terms of very minimal amounts of debt that you have, particularly dedicated to your enterprise fund asset, your water and sewer system, and you have set up a system and plan in place for maintaining that, and setting aside money and budgetary practices that you all are doing every year. Standard and Poor's love that, and we had a great discussion with them that some of the staff sat in with on a conference call a couple of weeks ago, and so, congratulations. That's a really big deal that you should be commended for, because again, just a couple of years ago, we were, we were pretty tight, you know.
Well, before you leave that particular point, I see we have our friend Ed Moore here tonight. Mr. Moore, I think years ago, Mr. Moore helped us as part of our financial planning task force to start down that road of putting, you know, proper reserves in place, and Ed, we appreciate your leadership during those times. Thank you. I wasn't sure if I was supposed to introduce him or not. I did.
Okay, thank you.
He's always our guy.
Yeah.
Hopefully not for long, but keep going.
Okay. So in the booklet here, it gives you some market information. It tells you a little bit, the rating report is in here. It is behind tab two, and then there's a blue sheet, and it's, the cover page says ratings direct, and it's a nice read, and it tells you a little bit about what we just talked about, and the fact that you all have a plan in place for, you know, handling future capital improvements, diversified economy, you know, these types of things, ample water supply and treatment capacity, you know, no issues in that regard. So clean bill of health, really, so that's fantastic. Now, let's talk about what happened and the opportunities here. So there were, there are three bond issues that are eligible for redemption, okay? One is currently callable, that we've been kind of watching, smaller amount, and then there was the O5As and O5s, the O5As that were a significant-sized deal that is eligible for redemption. It was, that was a refunding in '05 of some old bonds. So they have 15 years left on them, and they're eligible for redemption on March the 1st, 2015. Well, we hadn't been able to refund those or advance refund those, because it's a refunding of a refunding. We can't, the tax code doesn't allow us to do that, get, you know, that many, that many shots with a tax-exempt refinancing. So, because we're taking advantage of our ability to issue tax-exempt debt. Now, behind tab three, I'd like to turn you, ask you to turn two pages in, and it is a landscaped page, and I'm sorry, I should have probably sent this over to you guys to see on the big screen there. So, but all I've got is the old-fashioned booklet here, I'm sorry. So is everybody with me there where you can see? This is what, this is the nuts and bolts of the whole transaction here. So your existing water, this is just your water and sewer system bonds. Your debt service in this fiscal year is about 8.8 million. It starts dropping down, 8.1, 6.7 rolls out there, about five and a half million bucks for several years. Now, the amount of debt service that's being refunded there, those are the payments between now and 2029 that we are, that really are responsible for the O4As, O5s, and 10As, excuse me, those bonds that are being refunded. We're going to replace that, those payments with, under that column, Series 2015 Refunding Bonds, and you can see the interest rates and yields. Now, the interest rate, the average rate, true interest cost on the bonds that were sold today, that are before you tonight, that averages 2.42%. 2.42%. Not bad for 15 years on a water and sewer system. So these aren't even tax-backed, and 2.42%. So the bonds were paying off, the bonds were refunding, 5.01%, which, you know, remember, that was a refunding, so that was a great deal back in '05. So the, after, then, after that is replaced, you have your new debt service, and then the real nice numbers there, and the far right-hand columns, that is the annual savings to your enterprise fund. So starting next year, you're going to see about $435,000 a year in savings. That's significant. Total's up to 6.4 million. 6.4 million dollars our ratepayers save as a result of the lower interest rates here and good bond market. The net present value savings, if you figure out the internal, you know, really the yield valued of dollars today, in today's dollars, that's 5.5 million dollars, or 16.8%. Remember, you know, the kind of rule of thumb really is, you do a deal if it's got 3%, well, this is, you know, five times that. So a great deal for the city. I'm not going to talk anymore, Mayor, and, but I'm happy to answer any questions. There's some other fun stuff in here, like the offering document, not to put words in anybody's mouth after questions. The very last page is a blue sheet that has suggested form of motion as directed by bond council.
Okay. Just a couple of points. You know, I want to congratulate the staff as well, Mr. Willard and the rest of the staff in managing, of course, with Miss Angela Cohen's help as well, I think she's somebody, there she is, on the front row. But anyway, just, I mean, look, this is, this again, when you're saving 16% roughly over the life of these bonds for the ratepayer, I think that's what our taxpayers expect, you know, that we're good stewards of their tax dollars, and being able to continue to build our financial wherewithal, if you will, and our ratings just saves us money and allows us to be able to go out and borrow money at these, wouldn't we individually love to borrow money at that counter rate, right? Okay. Any questions? Okay, so we have a motion, so I'll need to, we'll need to make this, this motion. A motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing issuance and sale of the City of Longview, Texas Water Work and Sewer System Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2015, approve all matters incident thereto.
Move to approve.
A motion, a second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Mr. John, as always?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Items of community interest. I lost mine. Did you take my items of community?
No, sir.
Mr. Sims?
Well, I did have these papers. I don't really have anything tonight. I'm glad everybody's back and had a good holiday, and Mayor, you and I especially need to press forward and get a lot done in the next five months, because after that, we're going to be gone, and we'll, we'll always say we wished we had done that, so that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Garrett?
I'm just glad to be back, Mr. Mayor.
Where you been?
Well, down in South Texas.
South Texas?
On the coastline, down in Texas City.
You down there fishing, or what?
On the beach.
On the beach?
But Officer Bishop, I wanted to commend one of your officers, par officer for Beat 50. I was talking to him today, and he said he's increased his crime watch group by 50%. So I think that's a, that was a great deal for 2014, and he's continuing to add two or three more for 2015, so I want to commend him for those efforts. Thanks a lot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for you.
Good job. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cashin.
First thing, I want to just say how excited I am, and happy new year to everybody. We're off to a phenomenal start. We had, hopefully, one of our next-to-last meetings for the comprehensive plan. I won't steal your thunder, Mr. Chair, or President, Mr. Manley. But I was just so excited to be there. We are in the last steps of actually solidifying the plan. This is great. So hats off to those who have served. I see many of you in the audience who've served on this commission, and also hats off to our community and our mayor for facilitating this process. MLK time's coming up, so let me run through it right quickly. Friday, June the 9th, the Young Dreamers Scholarship Awards banquet. That will be at the Summit Club and begins at 7:00 PM. Friday, January the 16th, George Faber and Friends. That will probably be at Moncaul, not quite sure. Saturday, January the 17th, we will have our parade, and of course, community events at Broad and Recreation Center. The parade begins at 10:00 AM, typically at Ryder Drive and Martin Luther King. Sunday, the ecumenical service will be at one, well, I'm sorry, well, that will be at 6:30 PM. That's the community worship service. And then from 1:00 to 4:30 PM, there will be an MLK 2015 service project specifically targeting District 3, which I'm excited about that, too, fire preparedness. That's huge. And thanks to Johnny Zachary, our fire marshal, and of course, our chief, JP Stillman, for allowing this to take place. It's really important. And also on that Sunday, there will be a Black Lives Matter march that will begin at 1:00 PM at St. Mark CME Church, which is my church. All in the community are welcome to come. It is not just for CMEs, but this is a national initiative taking place across the country, spearheaded by CME, AME Zion bishops. Monday, June the 19th, the Table of Brotherhood Breakfast, 8:00 AM, Johnny Casey's Great Breakfast. 11:30, the MLK march. We will march from Broad and Recreation Center down to Mount Olive, where Reverend Palmer is the pastor, and then we will have our noon memorial service. Do get involved and participate in these events. This is just such a great time, and I find myself feeling very blessed to live in a community like Longview, because there are so many things that oftentimes we may not, or may not have to deal with, and we're really on a good path right now. So do come, share with us. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you very much, Cashin.
Gosh, there are some people in this community that just give so much from the heart and from their time and their money, and the, I guess, over 100 women who have been recognized over the course of the last decade. That, what an impressive group of people, and it was a real pleasure to be part of that. And congratulations to all of them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Allen, welcome home.
Mr. May?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You got suntans.
One item I wanted to mention, in your water bill that you received in December, will be receiving, there's a city activities calendar in there that was prepared by city staff. And this is a wonderful piece of information. There's really everything in there you could think about. City activities, you need to look at this calendar, and there's a lot of things going on that the city is responsible for, city staff's responsible for here in Longview. You need to be active and participate, because there's certainly some wonderful activities in there. And again, I just want to say thank you for the city staff that put this activities calendar together.
Okay, thank you, sir. Well, to come back after, about the comprehensive plan, I think Richard and Casher both covered it very well. I don't know why they have it on my announcement, but let's see if there's anything here that y'all didn't already say. No, y'all said all that. Okay. City of Longview offices will be closed on Monday, January 19th, in service of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Also important, that the January 22nd meeting is being moved to Tuesday, January 27th. We're going to have a work session at 4:30, and then our council meeting following after that. The work session is going to be to, for the council to focus in on the operational issue of the future animal shelter. We invite the community to come out and talk to us. I've had some people say that, well, if y'all are going to start at 4:30, and the council meeting starts at 5:30, y'all are going to spend, no. No. We're going to be discussing this item during the work session for as long as we need to, and then the council meeting will start. So, if anybody wants to come out and participate in the discussions, please do so. Mr. Manager, did you have something?
Yes, sir, I did.
Well, it's my turn.
It was my turn. All right. Once again, this is the night for City of Longview Awards, I guess, with the bond rating. We also want to recognize our finance department, along with our media development. Terry Miller heads that up, and Angela Cohen, of course, our finance director. And we have won the Platinum Leadership Circle Award, which is the highest possible award from the State Controller's Office for implementing financial transparency. And this is done, accomplished through our website and media. All the financial information is on there. And so, we make available online our budget, the comprehensive financial report, a check register, debt information, tax information, and much more. And you can see all of that at longviewtexas.gov. So, the Platinum Award is a big deal, and so we're really proud of our staff to do that.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. One other thing, just to add on to Richard's talking about our sanitation program. I did receive a letter from a citizen, my friend, Mr. Louis Solerier, regarding something he had sent into the newspaper and kind of correcting some of the information in what he sent in. But the main thing about our sanitation program is that we are still learning some things. There's still things that have to get worked out. It is by far not, I would say, not working on automatic pilot yet. It will get there, but we ask you to continue to be patient. And indulge, just as we try to, you know, get things, you know, refined and get things fine-tuned, whether the truck goes down one way to pick up on one side of the street and back up down the other, that's pretty good driving, back up all the way down my street. But anyway, that really doesn't happen, to my knowledge. We're still, we're still trying to figure out our new sanitation, our natural gas-fired, by the way, you know, vehicles. So, there's a lot of work going on. But the main thing, I think, I'd like for the citizens to know, when you look at the paper and see the amount of recycling that we're going, that we're sending in, and that picture showed it, they're going to need to expand that place pretty quick. But, but what I hope that you're seeing, I look at that trash as dollars, and at some point in time, those dollars are coming back to the citizen, because more we put into that recycling out of that dump, the less it's going to cost us to haul trash out to the dump, okay? So, please indulge, be patient with us. I can assure you, Mr. Archer is deep in the middle of this trash, and he's going to get it figured out. So, please, please, please.
He would appreciate the metaphor.
Well, that's true. So anyhow, that being the case, we're going to move to executive session. Personnel matters under Texas Government Code 551074. Consider, discuss, deliberate performance evaluations for the municipal court judge, city secretary, city manager, city attorney. B also would be deliberation regarding real property under Texas Government Code 551072 in consultation with the city attorneys under Texas Government Code Section 551071, which would be deliberate to purchase and value real property interest for right-of-way improvements and furtherance of FM 2275 George Ritchie Road Extension Project located in the City of Longview, Greg County, Texas, which acquisition is for a public purpose. Receive legal advice from the city attorneys concerning legal issues regarding the acquisition of such real properties. City council may reconvene in public session for action on the above items discussed in a closed meeting executive session. Do I need to read all this other stuff?
No, no.
You're going to read that. We'll come back. Okay, we'll come back. Okay, we'll convene to executive session.